Okay, good afternoon. I would like to call to order the March 30th, 2020 Salina City Commission meeting. At this time, I would ask staff if the notice pertaining to the Kansas Open Meeting Act has been provided.
Yes.
Okay, staff says it has. Thank you for that. With that, we will do the roll call.
Mayor Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Franz?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Those that are able, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Okay, before we go to the Citizens Forum, I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Mike Skrag to discuss again how we're handling this during the COVID-19 pandemic. So, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a number of procedural things in place that I want to go over with you and with the listeners. So for starters, I am going to unmute one of our staff people, Scott Gardner. He's going to help us monitor kind of the performance of some of these things. So, Scott, are you -- oop, I'm sorry. Scott, are you on the line?
I'm not able to hear you.
You can barely hear me? Okay. Can you hear me now?
No.
Ah, it's this one. How about now?
Unmuted.
There we go. Sorry, I unmuted the conference phone. How about now?
Now I can hear you.
All right. That's why we're doing this. So, I need to verify a couple of things. Number one, verifying that the conference call is getting sound out, which Scott just verified. Scott's also monitoring on another room, the Salina Media Connection feed. So, Scott, can you verify that Salina Media Connection audio and video is working?
I'm not able to get anything from there.
And how about the YouTube Live feed?
I'm still trying to pull that one up.
And I did just get a text from a constituent that said that there is no sound going out on cable.
Okay. That's why we're doing this. Bear with me.
I guess I could say something. I don't think anybody could hear me. So, I would explain what's happening, but...
So, I guess it's time for juggling.
Scott, have you been able to log on to YouTube Live? What I do know is Salina Media Connection employee is headed across the street to reboot a particular computer that seems to be the source of the sound problems. So, I saw him sprinting out the door as I stepped out into the hall.
Did we get verified, Mike, that YouTube was working?
They're checking an account setting on it as well. It worked the last time, and I see about 15 seconds of one earlier today, but I don't see the current feed.
Mike, you want to reach under your table and under the right -- that right leg there is kind of iffy there. I just, I didn't want your computer going down, or we'd have more technical difficulties.
I appreciate that.
That would have been some excitement.
From a resident who's watching, she said there's sound now on...
Salina Media Connection?
Salina Media Connection, but none on the Internet.
None on the Salina Media Connection?
None on the computer, none on YouTube.
She's watching on the TV and the computer.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's encouraging. It sounds like Salina Media Connection has reset, and the YouTube Live setting is being checked as we speak.
Those who are watching, and if there is volume out there, we are in the middle of trying to take care of a couple of technical difficulties to make sure all of our sources are up and running. So, please be patient as they work on that.
And she says now it's on YouTube as well.
Two out of three.
Get in there.
Two out of three, and the majors makes you a multimillionaire. Yeah, okay. No, YouTube, okay, thank you.
Was the third one Facebook Live? Or what was...
YouTube.
Oh, YouTube, okay.
Okay, let me try this again. I've got Scott Gardner standing by, trying to monitor all of this. So, Scott, are you able to hear me on the conference call?
Yes, I am.
Are you able to see video on Salina Media Connection?
Yes, sir.
Are you able to hear sound on Salina Media Connection?
Yes, sir.
Are you able to see video on the YouTube Live?
I might be a little bit late. I'm not seeing that yet.
Are you able to hear sound on YouTube Live? You said you had a viewer at home that saw it?
I think she is watching both on...
Oh, she's probably watching Salina Media Connection online.
Watching Salina Media Connection on cable as well as on her computer.
Okay. Did we state that YouTube would be...
We did.
...there for sure, okay? Or just a backup?
That was part of our announcement.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to verify, okay?
We're getting mixed reports of people saying they can see YouTube Live, and the account says that there's an access denial. So, we're trying to troubleshoot that.
Mine says this live event will begin in a few minutes.
Mine says waiting for City of Salina.
I was trying to find that, and it looks like I got a puppy video. So, I guess you know what I watch on YouTube. I was gonna... To be fair, it was a really cute...
Now, I'm waiting for the City of Salina.
Okay.
I gotta hit all the right buttons, you know?
Not good to yawn early in a meeting. What'd you say? Not good to yawn early in a meeting.
Does it still say waiting on Salina, Rod? Have you tried it again?
Yeah, that's what mine is saying, is waiting.
Looks like they think they have it solved, they're waiting for the setting to take effect. Looks like staff believes they have it solved, they're waiting for the setting to take effect. It is showing us as live, it's counting viewers, it's recording.
It is showing us as live, it's counting viewers, it's recording, but we don't have
an explanation of why on the other end it's not being picked up.
Is it picking up volume and no picture?
Not on YouTube.
Neither.
Right.
How was the wording of the notification given? Was it...
Yeah, provided that City Commissioners' meetings will take place via telephone conference until further notice. You can view the meetings on Access TV either via Cox Cable Channel 20 or online at www.salinatv.org or at the City of Salina YouTube channel, youtube.com/cityofsalinakansas. And that's the concern, is we had about 10 people trying to view it at that platform.
Let me get off. Maybe that'll work. They sit down and...
YouTube Live. There we go. All right, I see it. Trying to find myself in the room.
Wait at yourself, Mike.
Take that back. Yep, there's a delay, but there it is. All right, let me verify.
I haven't online yet. But that's verification. If we have one or the other, we're okay. If we can get a message to those that are trying to switch, but...
Has he yawned out? I looked literally out and went back.
Because I would think anyone watching on Facebook has access to the online...
We are not -- we chose to broadcast to YouTube because you don't have to have an account, or Facebook you do, and so we're broadcasting to YouTube Live. When I completely closed out and came back in, I was then able to see it. And did you say that yours came, started to come through?
Well, I'm just hanging out, so...
Does the television broadcast still show across the bottom of the panel, the website to go to for the city's live feed?
Um, yes.
So, they have an alternative to go...
They have an alternative. It's just the question of letting them know they need to go to that alternative, getting the message out. But I'm seeing it live on my iPad. Yep.
If we could get Scott to verify that, that'd be... Scott's live?
That's good, Scott's got it. I've got it.
All right.
Both platforms are operational.
Okay, let me verify one more time. Salina Media Connection, sound and video?
Yes.
Conference call, sound, no video.
Yes.
YouTube Live, sound and video?
Yes.
All right, thank you. One other, a couple of other procedural items. Based on the positioning in the room, we're going to ask Mayor Hoppick to announce the agenda items so that it can be picked up on the conference phone. And then, we have the possibility of the need for an executive session. You have wording in front of you. Given the social distancing requirements, this is probably the most appropriate room for us to conduct an executive session in. So, if that, if you choose to go into executive session, we will then need to mute the conference, leave the conference call in effect, but mute it. Salina Media Connection already has a protocol that they can go into, they can put a pattern on the screen that we're in executive session, and then we'll do the same for YouTube Live. We'll continue to meet in this room in executive session. When we reconvene in open session, then we'll need to go through this whole exercise of confirming everything's back up and running. So, with that, my apologies, YouTube Live seems to be the problem today, but we are now up and operational.
Okay, I'd like to thank the public for hanging in there with us as we made sure we got all three of our social, our apps up and running so everyone could watch. With that, we will move to item number three on our agenda, which is Citizens Forum. This is a chance for individuals to, today, call in if they have something they would like to bring to the City Commission. Remember, you have five minutes, and it should be dealing with something that's not currently on the agenda. So, with that, I will look to Shandy to see if we have any, or... Oh, you have, I'm sorry.
If anyone is on the line and wishes to speak, press star nine now. I recognize everybody that's on the line, they're all staff, so...
Okay. Sorry, we have no one indicating they wish to speak.
Okay. Give it another second, okay. With that, we will move to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda today, we have 4.1, approve the minutes of the March 23rd, 2020 meeting.
Mayor...
Go ahead.
Right ahead. Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve the minutes of March 23rd, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0.
One procedural question. Do we still need to identify ourselves for the conference call?
Good point. Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, Mayor Hoppick, we will move into administration. We have 5.1, first reading ordinance number 20-11031, establishing a temporary moratorium on future building permits in the Grand Prairie Edition in the City of Salina, Kansas. 5.1A, declare a compelling public purpose exist to allow first and second reading on the same day at the discretion of the governing body. And 5.1B, second reading, ordinance number 20-11031, at the discretion of the governing body. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners. Lauren Driscoll, Director of Community and Development Services. As you may remember, on January 27th of this year, the City Commission approved ordinance number 20-11023, as amended, establishing a 60-day temporary moratorium on future building permits in excess of 35 total building permits in Phase 1, Phase 2 of the Grand Prairie Edition. As of today, March 30th, 2020, that moratorium will expire. Also, as of today, and is published in our staff report available before this meeting, 28 permits have been issued for Grand Prairie and two are pending issuance within the subdivision. During this last 60-day moratorium, staff has facilitated discussion with the developer as directed by the City Commission, as well as the Planning Commission meetings and deliberations in preparation of bringing this item back to you with anticipation of resolve. The developer has indicated both to staff and the Planning Commission that they will be providing the City Commission with a proposed solution as directed by the ordinance. Unfortunately, though, due to the fluid nature of COVID-19 and directives from the Salina... Sling County Health Department and the Governor of Kansas, the March 17, 2020 Planning Commission meeting was canceled on very short notice. The status of additional meetings has been in question, making it difficult to provide advance notice, as we have been doing throughout this process. Based on current conditions, we are no longer holding public meetings, which will again continue to postpone this item. Advance notice of this moratorium action is not required, but the courtesy has been extended, and we would like to continue that. Extension of the temporary moratorium is the most effective way to preserve the current status of the Planning Commission's consideration of the Grand Prairie replat until there is more clarity about our ability to perform the business of the Planning Commission due to COVID-19. The numeric limit of the building permits previously imposed does not represent a hardship for the developer, and staff has confirmed that with them, since it would allow five more homes to be built before the limit is met. Staff has recommended taking this action to preserve the current status until further notice. Staff does not recommend altering the approach in any way in the light of public notice and meeting difficulties arriving from COVID-19, and the level of public input has been received on this topic in the past. Therefore, the options in front of you today are to, one, approve ordinance 20-11031, to approve ordinance number 20-11031 with amendments as the City Commission deems appropriate, or three, to postpone consideration of ordinance number 20-11031 to the specified date and time as provided by staff direction regarding additional information or amendments by the City Commission. And as noted earlier, it is recommended that this be taken action on first and second readings since the moratorium does expire today. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for staff?
One, Commissioner Davis, is this establishing a temporary moratorium or continuing, or is it necessary to have one end and then the other one begin?
Greg and I did talk about this. It is important, because we hadn't had previous notice because of the meetings changing, that there should be two separate moratoriums. It's not a continuation, that the one has ended, and by enacting this one, then the new one would start.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hodges, what, does there ever come a point where not being able to take action at the Planning Commission level then means that an application for the replat is either nullified or automatically approved?
I don't know about nullified, but there are two time scenarios, both from state statute and local statute, that look at a 60 and 45-day window. But in extenuating circumstances, those can be extended with, particularly with permission of the applicant. And this applicant is fine with this approach, is not concerned about additional time. But it can result in approval.
Okay.
If it's not being addressed. I think Greg can clarify, but particularly for this replat, the public hearing has been open and had, and so since that public hearing has been had within that certain amount of time, it can keep moving forward on this timeline. So I have to, that's why I want to reference back to Greg, since I don't have those in front of me, but I think this particular replat compared to some of the others we have in the office that we've been seeking guidance on, this one is not up against that clock anymore. Mr. Bankston.
Yes, Greg Bankston, legal counsel. The statute that relates to any potential scenario where you would have a plat that would be deemed approved on the basis of a lack of action by the Planning Commission, that has to occur in a context where the Planning Commission, or there is no basis for the applicant to know why action was not taken. And I think in this circumstance, as unique as it may be, there is sufficient evidence that is clear to the applicant, and I understand, the applicant understands why it is that action, final action by the Planning Commission has not been taken. So I think in this particular situation, the statute would be inapplicable. It also, that statute refers to plats and not replats, a fine distinction, but it is a distinction that is made in the statute. So between those two, I think this matter would just proceed as circumstances allow.
Commissioner Hodges, so what would be the plan of action should Planning Commission meetings continue to be canceled? And let's say that the applicant says, okay, we've got a plan, we're ready to proceed, I've got, you know, another 10 building permits lined up, and I want to get going on this. What would be, do we, what would we do in that scenario?
I guess I don't, I don't have an answer for that at the moment, since the governor's order for 30 days and the county's order just happened. I think it has created kind of a new timeline. That's one of the reasons we're recommending 60 days versus 30 days, is over the next 30 days, I think one of the things that staff is doing is trying to figure out what a new normal for business looks like. I can't promise you that in 30 days, there are other ramifications related to COVID, but I can tell you that in the next 30 days, we are looking at how we can conduct public business and try and keep things moving forward. So it's our hope, and if City Manager Mike Scragg wants to add anything to this, that within 30 days, we will, we will have some other solutions on how we can get to these things.
Commissioner Hodges, so then there might be virtual Planning Commission meetings held, for example, so that they can continue to conduct business on their end?
Mike Scragg, City Manager, the first priority is not to have the scenario that you described where it automatically either is approved or denied take place. So we'll continue to work with the applicant and verify their receptivity to the approach. But if it becomes imminent that we think statutorily or procedurally, it's likely that our hands are going to be somewhat tied, then yes, we would either pursue some type of virtual meeting, something that's compliant with the directives that are in place at the time, and, you know, the most conservative approach would be to go ahead and deny the application to prevent proceeding until we feel comfortable that we're able to develop a process that's inclusive.
Thank you.
Mayor Hoppick, since this is a new moratorium, I didn't see where we're establishing a time period.
It's 60 days from when it starts.
The more, it doesn't say that, does it, or did I miss that? It talked about the 60 days on the prior one.
I think, Mike Scragg, City Manager, I think Section 2, there's hereby established a 60-day moratorium.
It wasn't, it wasn't in the motion, that's why I guess I was asking, so.
Correct, yeah, it's in the ordinance.
I wanted to, okay, I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that we were talking 60, because the ordinance, or the actual motion itself doesn't address that, so.
An ordinance title that would be published, and the information included with the publication that would go, does include a 60-day temporary moratorium on future building permits in excess of 35 total building permits in Phase 1 and 2 of the Grand Prairie Edition.
Because if somebody didn't have that ordinance in front of them, they wouldn't have that, so, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to also note, we will have at least one tech in the office every day under this 30-day window via the governor. And so we are continually to monitor, continue to monitor the amount of permits we have for this project and have it tagged that when we get close to that amount, to be able to catch that before those building permits are issued.
Commissioner Ryan here, the permits that have been issued and the pending, that's the same as they were before when we?
I think there's one more in the pending category. When we last spoke with you, we had 21, 28 issued, one pending. We now have two pending. And pending can be for a variety of reasons. Sometimes they need to add, they need to bring additional documentation in to complete their permit, and sometimes they just haven't picked it up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Franz, a minor comment perhaps, but the request for commission action indicates 28 permits issued and two pending, but the ordinance indicates 29 issued in Section 1D. Well, it says approved as opposed to issued, and I'm not sure if there's a fine distinction there or not.
Staff would recommend, or would welcome an amendment if necessary. I would look to Mr. Bankston for clarification.
I guess the question is, which is the number? I don't mind 29 being in the ordinance, it's just, you know.
Mike Scragg, City Manager here, it's not uncommon for us to say a permit's been approved and have it sit at the front counter until it's picked up, and then it's truly issued, but I don't know enough about the status.
No, of the two that, of the two that are pending, one is ready to be picked up, and one needs additional information.
Okay.
So.
So that probably is 29 approved and one pending.
That's probably the 29th, and so there's 29 with one pending at this point.
But if these, if that applicant just never showed up, it would never be issued.
Right, okay. Language.
I understand.
Process.
Process.
Okay, any more questions for staff? With that, we will open it up for public comment. Again, star nine, correct, Mike?
Correct.
Star nine, if you would like to make, have a comment on the current agenda item.
I don't see anyone. Jim Kowach, if you're listening, would you hit star nine just to verify the functionality? You may not be listening. I only have one caller that's other than staff, and that's Kristy Carlson. I'm going to unmute. Kristy Carlson, are you on the line for this topic? Oh, she just raised her hand, so. Ms. Carlson, can you hear us?
I am.
There we go.
Yes, the floor is yours. Did you have any comments you would like to make?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can.
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Evidently, I'm on a delay.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought that's what was happening.
Go ahead whenever you're ready.
I just, I know for a fact that some emails were issued from neighbors in regards to this, and I was wondering if you guys received them?
I can personally say I received two, I believe.
Yes, and I was going to note those as well for you, Commissioners. We received a couple emails today, all of them requesting that the moratorium be extended in light of the circumstances.
I did not receive those.
I'm not, I'm not sure I did either, but I haven't, I don't know that I've checked my email since noon, so they may be sitting there.
They did go to the City Commission email address.
Yes.
Commissioner Franz, I know I've received one that came to that address.
Yeah, we did receive those. Did you have any other comments to make? And I believe one of those emails was from you, is that not correct?
And just to summarize, I think that we all agree that a 60-day would be the best way to go forward.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else, Mike?
We do not.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the Commission for comments or a motion.
Commissioner Davis, I move that we approve on first reading ordinance number 20-11031, establishing a temporary moratorium on future building permits in the Grand Prairie Edition in the City of Salina, Kansas.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
Mayor Hoppick, we have a first and a second approving ordinance number 20-11031. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes 5-0. That brings us to 5.1A.
Mayor Hoppick, in light of our unusual operating situation now and the expiration of a current moratorium, I would move that there is a compelling public purpose that exists to allow first and second reading of ordinance 20-11031 on the same day.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
Mayor Hoppick, we have a first and a second to declare a compelling public purpose exists to allow a first and second reading on the same day. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That also passes 5-0. That brings us to 5.1B.
Commissioner Davis, I move we approve on second reading ordinance number 20-11031.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
Mayor Hoppick, we have a first, a motion and a second to approve on second reading ordinance number 20-11031. I believe with that, do we need a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to change out some staff here for just a second, if you'll bear with us. Again, we're trying to abide by the CDC's recommendation of no more than 10 in the room at one time, so. So with that, we will move to 5.2, financial discussion continued, and I will turn it over to Ms. Pack.
Mayor Hoppick, if I may do a little bit of an introduction, Mike Scragg, City Manager, understandably, last Wednesday, I wanted to say last week, but last Wednesday, you asked for additional details related to finances, and amongst identifying essential and non-essential employees and dealing with some of the other directives that have come down, we, staff across the departments, the department heads and their support staff, and especially Ms. Pack and Terrace Sauber and the HR Director Natalie Fisher and Scott Gardner and I, tried to dive into a greater level of detail into the financials, which Debbie's going to present to you here in just a minute. I would tell you, understandably, some of you have asked, you know, what's our revenue projection, or what budget are we trying to budget to? And I don't have a real good answer for that. Our focus has been on expenditures primarily, well, two things, revenue sources and likely impacts on those sources, and then expenditures and opportunities to save money, thinking we needed to just identify any and all opportunities for cost savings, and we can have a conversation about how conservative we want to be in that regard. So I think Debbie's done a terrific job of pulling together a lot of information in a short amount of time and facilitating a lot of conversations to get here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Pack.
And before we get started, I want to thank you for the legal side. I know that some of us.
I second that, Commissioner Franz.
Some of us aren't as young as we used to be, and the legal, or the letter side was a little small for us, so thank you for doing that.
No problem, we want to make sure you can get the information. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance, good afternoon. As Mike said, a lot of the, the time that we've been spending is trying to figure out, because we don't have a real good control of what the revenue impact is going to be at this time because of the delay of collection of sales tax and delay of collection of transit guest tax, and not really knowing what the length of this process is going to be. I just want to verify your microphone was on, sorry. There's a green light. We really wanted to take the opportunity to say, okay, we don't know what that's going to be, but we certainly have some control over what our expenditures are and where we can go with those things, and make sure that we're addressing those very quickly as opposed to waiting six or seven months and getting to the end of the year and not having very many options. So we'll, we'll review some revenue information very briefly, but the gist of the discussion today will be on major projects, major spending out of the sales tax fund, and ways to save some expenditure dollars in the general fund. So the first graph that we looked at here was, we wanted just to give you, make sure that you knew, and this has been provided online, so I think you've probably seen this before, this is the February 29, 2020, updated financials. As you can see, at that time, things were looking pretty good. However, we didn't know that coronavirus was coming at the time, so we had, we went ahead and we did our projections based on the information we have, and that's all we can do at that point, is look at the data we have, see what it's telling us things are going to do, and just look and see where things were going to possibly end at the end of the year. So that's really the only reason we provided that information, just to get a perspective of where we were going into this. Then we took a look at, and this is just a short, and we've also provided this, is just to get a clear picture of where our revenues really do come from. And as we know, sales tax is a huge part of our revenue source for the general fund, property tax, franchise fees, transfers are a big part, and then we get into some EMS fees, and while they're not insignificant, fees and charges and those types of things do have an effect on the overall general fund budget. So then what we did was, we really dove into what those revenue sources were and what we believed, and you, you're welcome to stop me and make a comment as we go along, because this is a discussion, it's not me talking to you, so I'm, I'm more than willing to have you jump in and make any points that you might, that we might be missing, or something that you've thought of or heard of. that you've thought of or heard of, because we certainly want to make sure that we have all the information available that we can. So here we provided kind of what we thought the effects of the pandemic were gonna have on all of our revenue sources, but I also wanted to give you the perspective here of what that looks like in dollars to the general fund. So in sales tax, we figured that there could be reduced spending based on stay-at-home orders, retail and restaurant restrictions or closures because of the smaller shops that may not be able to survive the stay-at-home order, the long-term closures of business, and especially unemployment. We don't know what that's gonna be at this time, whether those people go back to work. So that sales tax is $13.1 million out of our $44 million general fund revenue budget, which is about 30%. On the property tax side, it's about $10.4 million, which is about 24% of our revenue. We believe we're gonna see an increase in delinquencies. We saw that back in 2008, we saw a couple of years of increase in delinquencies. We know that, we don't know whether they're gonna delay the due dates of those payments. They've delayed the due dates of some payments as license renewals and motor vehicle renewals. We don't know at this point if that's gonna affect the second half property tax, which is due May 10th. Hopefully, we'll know pretty soon, but we haven't heard anything yet. And we really don't know what the future impact of assessed valuation's gonna be, so that's something we're gonna have to continue to watch. When I talked to the county earlier this year, things were looking pretty flat, but with this, you don't know what that's, what that's gonna do, so that's something we'll have to keep an eye on. Franchise fees, and I noted here that Slide 5 gives you a little bit of detail of where those come from, electricity, cable, gas, natural gas, they're about $7 million of our budget, which is about 16%. The executive order precluding shut-offs may or may not have some effect on our revenues, higher delinquency rates due to unemployment, commercial versus residential use. With shutdown, some of these businesses aren't using as many utilities, so that could have effect on the franchise fees. We don't know if we'll see an increase in residential use. The other thing that kind of factors into this revenue source is the weather. If it's a hot summer, we might see our electric and water bills go up, but we really don't know. And then we won't, we'll see some reductions in cancellations as cost-saving measures. For example, if I'm unemployed, I may have to cancel my cable TV, because these are kind of discretionary spending on people's parts. So those might also affect this franchise fee.
Ms. Pack?
Yes.
Commissioner Franz, back on property taxes, I have, I guess, a question or a comment, maybe both. We call it the first half, but we've probably received 70% of those this year, because typically that first distribution is pretty large, and probably the impacts of delinquencies and so on really won't be a big deal until 2021. I mean, I suspect that the distributions this year are gonna be fairly close to anticipated. They may be down a little bit, but again, we received the bulk of it, is my understanding.
That's correct. We normally see a bigger, bigger collection in the, in the December distribution, because people do have the option to pay.
Right.
And I agree that we probably won't see huge effect, because the majority of people pay their, their property tax through their escrow, and so that's being collected prior to this distribution. So before the pandemic, that, that money was already collected by mortgage companies. Those people that might be affected, and I agree, when, when we start seeing unemployment rates go up and people possibly losing their homes and unable to make their, their house payments, then we'll see some effect on that, so.
It could be, Mayor Hoppick, your commercial properties are fairly substantial too, and depending on what's going on, those could have an impact, so.
Mike Scragg here, I wonder if we shouldn't pause after, at the end of each slide and have some conversation, I've got some comments as well. We've got a lot of information, if we try to get all the way to the end, I'm not sure that's gonna be productive, but if it's okay with Ms. Pack, I'd suggest at the end of each slide, we kind of pause and talk it through.
Okay, that's fine with me. Interfund transfers, there was a question last week about what transfers were made into the general fund, or, and I provided that information also on page slide. That's about $4.4 million from various other funds. It's about 10%. That, in the 2020 budget, that's unchanged at this time, so we don't know at this point whether there'll be any direct relation to that. EMS, while we, while the chief has told us that the call volume has remained pretty steady, that's about $3.5 million and 8%. There again, unemployment or anything could, could create that, it could go skyrocketing, you know, those are just things that we're, we're not sure. Fees and charges, which is about 4% of our revenue, that, a majority of that is from parks and recreation, so as we've postponed or canceled parks and recreation programming, we will see a decrease in this, however, we should also see a decrease in the expenditures. There are some of those programs that we have expenditures that we're gonna spend no matter what, we have staffing or utilities or things like that, but there are some of those programs that we will have some savings in. We have parks trying to figure that out, you know, get down to a little bit more detail on that, as far as what, what they believe for this year, we will see those, how we will see those things kind of shake up for the programs that we've already canceled for this year. So with that, and Mr. Scragg's suggestion, are there any other comments or questions about this particular page?
If I could offer some observations to supplement on what Ms. Pack had to say, Mike Scragg, City Manager. With respect to unemployment, Natalie Fisher and, and Legal Counsel and I are trying to get a sense of the stimulus bill, what it might have to offer and how it might supplement Kansas unemployment. So it's intended to mitigate unemployment, I'm not saying that there won't be unemployment and the impacts of unemployment, but we recognize that got passed Friday afternoon, and we're trying to get more detail about that. With respect to delays in due dates, I think there's certain things that it looks like there might, it might create a month or two-month gap in our, if we receive revenue on a monthly basis. With respect to property taxes, there has, as Ms. Pack said, there's been inquiries, I haven't seen anything in particular about delaying property taxes, but since those are only paid twice a year, if that's delayed for a couple of months but still ends up in the 2020 fiscal year, it wouldn't necessarily have that, that entire effect of creating a gap, it'd be more a function of delinquencies at that point. And then EMS, if you recall, when we did the EMS study and the consultant came and presented to you, we were noteworthy in terms of our above-average collection rate, and so we've said the call volume remains steady, but we've yet to see what collection rate might be if, in this revised economy.
Commissioner Hodges, are we gonna go, I'll hold my questions for a later slide on the interfund transfers. You've got Slide 5 there, I just wanted to, because you go into more detail in that once we get into the other slides, correct?
We certainly can, yes.
Okay, and, but by and large, the interfund transfers are from like water accounts?
Yes, enterprise fund accounts that are reimbursing the general fund for services or that they're providing for those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on, on that page? Okay.
So now we go to Slide 5, we continue our general fund revenue sources and the impacts that we believe. Motor vehicle tax is 3% of our general fund revenue at about $1.2 million. We do know that there's been an executive order that has delayed, that gives you the ability to delay your renewal by 60 days. We believe we might see declines. That could effectively push off our collections for those, if that continues through the end of the year, because collections are, renewals on motor vehicle tax are by letter, so if they, if they push everybody and they push the last two months of the year into the next year, that could create some delay for us in collection. If they just delay who's affected now and then get back on track, then I don't, I don't see that that collection will be affected that much, other than with people not paying, but again, that's another whole story.
Mayor Hoppick, so they've delayed it, but they haven't said how that, just, did they just delay like Aprils, or how did, how did that order read?
They didn't, they have, they weren't specific, they just said there was a 60-day delay.
So that-
On renewal of-
Okay.
Of your motor vehicle licensing, so I'm not sure if that affects everyone in the year yet, or if that's just for the current renewals.
Thank you.
And municipal court, we think there'll be, there will be a temporary court closure, which will, will reduce some of the cases and things that are going through. We also have police activity that's being redirected for other purposes. We may have some payment delays on some of those cases that are already pending. That's about 3% also of our, of our general fund revenue. License and permits constitutes about 1%, which is about $500,000. At this moment, because construction's considered an essential service, we, we don't know what it's gonna do, but we, with unemployment and things like that, we could see some reduction, and businesses just having to, to come up with more money right now than they're taking in, we may see some reduction in construction activity. Grants, which is a little, is less than 1%. We've seen a lot of information coming out that there are more and more opportunities for grants, so we're asking staff to be, to pursue these grants as they're provided. There's a lot, they're being a lot more lenient right now, so we're hoping that we can kind of get, get into some of that, those funding sources that are being provided based on this information. Other taxes, which is typically our liquor tax, that's a little less than 1% of our general fund revenue at about $198,000. That really is, affects your clubs and things like that, and since those are closed, we would anticipate that that would be reduced. It's a pretty small amount of our general fund revenue. And then our investment income, we do have CDs that are currently in place that will not change their interest rate, which is a good thing, because we went into the, when we invested in those, those rates were pretty good for the time, and so as the interest rates drop now, the only thing that would be affected is if any of those have to be renewed in this timeframe. I think we have one that's due on April 1st, but I think the rest of them are due later in the year, so hopefully the, the market will be able to come back and rebound a little bit more for us on that one. So are there any questions on this particular section?
Mayor Hoppick, those CDs, are those part of our dollars being held in reserve, or what are those actually?
They're held in every fund, so the pool of money that we have is, is the money that we have in every fund, so it could be utilities, it could be the general fund or whatever, and then we just look at the pool in general and we invest that as we, our cash flow will allow us to do so. And then we do also hold some funding in what we call a sweep account at the, at our operating bank, which also earns interest. It's not as high as what we could do in an investment, but it is, it is earning a little bit of interest on those funds too.
Thank you.
This is Slide 5, which is the detail of the franchise fees and the interfund transfers. Was there any other specific questions or information that you needed on those, Commissioner Hodges?
I just wanted to confirm, so we, we put in about, well, almost, what's our, our total on the, let's see, we get, on the interfund transfers in terms of transferring them into the general fund? I mean, we have a lot here.
Yeah, I think it's between $4 and $5 million a year.
Yeah, okay, so basically, we are getting those from the fees that we're charging our consumers, our, our customers in terms of water, trash, et cetera, et cetera.
Those would be operating fees to those funds as if they were a company running a business. So we treat those as enterprises, which are basically self-supporting systems, that if they were a, a business or a construction company out in the real world, they would be paying a lot of these fees, anyway, franchise fees, payment in lieu of taxes, which would be your real estate taxes, and we do also charge them for the overhead to run the city, so any computer technology, the oversight of the other finance, the supportive finance department, and any of those other support functions that they don't have to pay for in their normal business.
So is there a list, like, Commissioner Hodges, so is there like a list or a matrix of what exactly that they're providing funding for, and how we, how we justify that?
I have not seen, typically, there's an overhead analysis that's done at some point, I have not seen one in the short time that I've been here, but typically, there's some matrix that's determined about how much time-
So like 5% or 10% or whatever?
Yeah, I can tell you the franchise fees are consistent with the franchise fees that other, the electric and the gas company are paying us, we've made those consistent with those. The other calculations on those other numbers were created in, in a time before my time. I could definitely look and see if I could find that information.
Mike Scragg, City Manager, you may recall, as part of our budget conversations, we did try to calculate these and report these as a percentage, so that we could compare them to a 5% or a 6% fee applied to another franchise operator. And, you know, with us operating our sanitation service the way that we do, it's a little bit unique. In many communities, they, by ordinance, control who can provide that service and charge a franchise fee of the trash hauler, based on its impact on streets. With us being the operator, that's one of the underlying items that is a franchise fee applied to sanitation. And then as Ms. Pack mentioned, payment in lieu of taxes, since we're not paying, a tax-paying entity, but a private corporation would be, it's intended to supplement that. You'll see that with the Housing Authority and other, other programs as well.
So like, with, Commissioner Hodges, so like with your example, with, you know, sanitation trucks from a private company, you know, creating more wear and tear on the roads, is there a specific amount that we tie to, to allocate from that franchise fee that we move over into like a public works account to, to supplement our street budget, or?
Yeah, we, we don't, I'm sorry, Mike Scragg again, we don't place that much of a specific attachment on those funds, but they do go into the general fund and they supplement, you know, in a roundabout way, supplement street work and, and the expenses of the general fund. But we, whether it's this or many other expenditures, and if you, if you look at recreation fees, we don't trace that fee payment all the way back to the payroll or the paycheck of the, of the employee that's giving that service. We do, it's just not to that level of detail.
And to, Commissioner Hodges, sorry, I keep forgetting to say that, but to what Ms. Pack said earlier, in terms of Parks and Rec, you know, obviously, they have some fixed overhead in terms of staffing, we're gonna be losing fees, but we're probably also going to be, you know, recovering some funds in other ways, but I know that Parks and Rec is very straightforward and very diligent about assigning a cost recovery number for every, every program that they have, and every facility that they have, so I just, I was wondering if we did something similar with, you know, in terms of like how our interfund transfers are broken down, if we're transferring it back into the general fund, I guess, I guess, you know, I'm just, I'm kind of looking at how that works, and as we get further into discussions about outstanding projects, I just wanted to make sure that I'm getting a better understanding of how interfund transfers work and what exactly they're funding.
Sure. Mike Scragg, with the, the size of budget that we have overall, we do take a fund accounting approach, but we don't, we don't isolate accounts down to the level, that level of detail. The intent is there, and if you track the sales tax dollars and these dollars, we spend well in excess of that in terms of street maintenance in general, but we don't, we don't track it to that level of detail from an accounting standpoint.
Thank you.
Commissioner Franz, I might be able to shed a little light on the overhead fee portion, and that used to be calculated based on number of employees in each of these enterprise funds, and the budget level as a substitute for the number of transactions, so we had some idea of what the management effort was to manage a number of employees in a budget of a certain size, and then that was allocated, and that used to be done every year, but what we discovered is that it was virtually the same every year, and so we, that kind of went by the wayside, and we just kind of carried on, and I suspect if they did it again, and if they used the same sort of formulas that we had in place at that time, they'd come up with very similar numbers to what our budget, it just didn't change much, much from year to year. That was on the overhead expense. For the pilot, we used to try to, we've tried to figure out what the taxable value of those facilities might be and apply a similar tax levy as a private entity might pay on those. So there is a background of, of some basis of doing that, but what we discovered is this simply didn't change enough from year to year to warrant the redoing that calculation regularly. With regard to the computer technology fees, again, we looked at number of employees, budget, and in the case of water customer counting, of course, they've got the billing system and so on, so that is a much larger portion of that fee than the, than we allocate to the other, or that we allocated to the other locations, I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Right, and I would, I would add, risk management, most likely- Right, and I would, I would add, risk management most likely is a proportional allocation of our insurance cost, depending on the assets of the individual fund.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that slide? So the next set of slides, probably five or six slides, we wanted to give you, we wanted to give you an overview of where every, every budgeted fund was that we had currently. I'm not going to go through every one of these funds because, but I will pick out some of them. So, because we will talk in detail a little bit more about the sales tax capital fund. We've kind of, we've talked about this arts and humanities with the, with the hard decision we made last year, so we know those numbers will change because of the River Festival. And then we'll talk about sales tax capital fund, as I mentioned earlier. But if there's any, and then, one of the funds that I thought was important to also kind of look at was the Tony's Pizza Event Center Fund, because it's very dependent on transient guest tax. And currently, we show that there's very little expenditures to date. We have gotten some information from Tony's Pizza Event Center, they have provided us with some cost-saving measures that they have put into place. I don't have specific dollars with that, but I would, just wanted to kind of mention that as we went through some of these funds. So if, if you have any questions about specific funds that are shown here, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Commissioner Hodges, I think this is more of a, a, a general question, but obviously, by taking the actions that we're presumably going to be taking today, we're going to reduce a lot of our expenses and a lot of our overhead, but correspondingly, we're going to be also reducing some of our revenues that we've received. So do we have kind of like an overall calculation of exactly how that balances out? Because, you know, on first look, you, you say, okay, we're not going to have the River Festival this year, and that must save us hundreds of thousands of dollars, but when you calculate the, the button sales, the, the private donations, et cetera, et cetera, that go to offset that, I mean, generally, the River Festival is kind of a break even, or maybe it's $10,000 to the bad, or $20,000 to the good, depending on, on the weather and the year, and all of those kinds of things. So, and it kind of goes along, you know, like with Kenwood Cove, or, you know, some of our, you know, the, the Parks programs that we're going to be.
Correct. Mike's Craig, you're absolutely right. We, the conversations we've been able to have so far, and the, in a relationship, I wanted to be sure to stress, is on the part, part-time staffing side, if we just say we have a savings in terms of part-time staffing, and that may be lifeguard expenses, but then that presumes we have an open Kenwood Cove, and we don't have the revenue. So we've asked staff to get to that level of detail, and, and we're not there yet. Generally, what I would tell you is, for the most part, pretty much everything's a loss leader in some fashion, whether it's the River Festival or Parks operations, so, you know, at its most basic level, I think cancellation of that has some incremental cost savings, but it's not purely just the, the avoided expenditures. It, it's going to be that, that net difference at the end of the day.
Absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Franz, if I might, might make a comment about something like the River Festival. The, the event does, I think typically, break even, maybe makes even a little bit, but what we need to think about is all of the effort that goes into prepping for the event that don't get charged off as fiscal costs. You know, the, almost all the other departments contribute something. We have, you know, barricades and trash, and there's a lot that goes into the preparation. And of course, the idea now is maybe we can use those people that were tied up doing that, maybe to help offset the need for temporary personnel, like in the Parks Department to do mowing and so on. So, so there, it's, it's probably an indirect thing, but the City Manager Craig is exactly right. It, it, there probably is some benefit, but it's pretty hard to directly measure, I would guess. I presume I have that somewhat close to correct.
I, I would agree with you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'm still struggling to figure out whether some of these make money or, or subsidized just financially alone, but yes.
Okay, so, any more questions about the specific funds? And we can, if we come up with a question later, we can always reference these. I think these are just good references as far as where they are and what kind of, what status they sit at right now.
Commissioner Franz, I did, I did have a concern, as you probably know already, because I sent you a list of questions that I don't expect you to answer today, about T-PAC and the fact that, you know, I, I really see the transient guest taxes as being really, really soft. And the fact that we supplement debt payments for T-PAC from that, as well as supplement operations, and we don't have direct control of the way they're operating the facility. And I know that our contract with them specifies a relationship in terms of, I don't want to, I don't, I'm not sure exactly how that plays out. I do know that they have expected performance parameters, and we, in a sense, if they meet those parameters, then we kind of keep them whole. And so I'm a little bit concerned about how that might play out at the end of the year. And I think we really need to make sure that they are doing everything they can to limit that exposure. And I know historically, Spectra, I think, has been pretty cooperative in, in doing that, but I, it's pretty important, I think, that we ride that, because I'd, I'd hate to get into next February and have a, you know, half a million dollar bill, or something like that, that we're looking at. And maybe you can educate me a little bit on the terms of the contract, which.
Well, what I can, Mike's Craig, what I can tell you is Spectra has proactively reached out to us with their cost-saving measures and some of their proposals, and actually asked for our approval on things that we're reviewing the contract, whether it's within our authority to approve them or not. So part of the conversation that we've been having is reviewing that contract for exactly what is our authority. And you may have noticed they postponed all their events, they, they're doing everything that is foreseeable, that I can see, to try to respond to this and avoid costs, but I do think we're going to have to spend some time looking at their efforts and their current budget versus revised budget going forward. Have not had an opportunity to do that since last Wednesday.
And I presume, not knowing how, Commissioner Franz, I, I presume that, you know, a lot of their event costs are driven by part-time personnel who are called in for events and so on, and I.
Yeah, that's correct.
You know, I, I, hopefully, that's enough to keep that from getting completely out of, out of sync.
Yeah, that's a good point. Mike's Craig, I don't know for sure, but just seeing their, their org chart in my head, I think they have about six or eight full-time staff, and then most everything else is supplemented with part-time staff. Yeah, I, I agree, we, that needs a long, hard look, and, and we just have, we're just getting started.
Commissioner Franz, again, I hate to be a, no, I don't, I enjoy it. The golf course, how are we operating that now? Because that is, has long been a facility that was kind of financially marginal, and we have supplemented it from time to time, and I don't think we're in a position now to be able to supplement it. So I'm a little bit worried about how that might play out if we keep the course open.
So is your question how we're operating it now, like, in the stay-at-home order, or?
Yes.
Yes, we, we've closed it. We issued a press release right shortly before the meeting started, indicating kind of the logic behind that, stressing employee safety first, trying to adhere to the stay-at-home order, reprioritizing, having limited staff in response to the stay-at-home order, and reprioritizing, obviously, the core services, you know, fire, police, EMS, water, sewer, sanitation, and then recognizing from a park standpoint, there is an encouragement to get out in, in the outdoors, but we're placing our emphasis on public parks that are available and not at a fee. So having said that, at the moment, we have had conversations with Parks Director about the need to continue to maintain, or mow fairways and greens. If we lose them, they go to seed. So in the short run, we've closed the operation, we've tried to minimize the, the amount of staffing, but it's still going to take quite a bit of staffing to mow. But our intention at the moment is to try to mow it with the expectation that we get out of the stay-at-home order, and we, we want to fire it back up. To your point, yeah, it, it has always needed some annual subsidy, or most years, and I don't have any reason to expect this would be different, especially if we have, you know, a block of time that is completely closed, and then if we have economic impacts on people's, you know, discretionary spending, this year, probably need as much or more subsidy than ever.
That probably merits some follow-up.
Commissioner Hodges, your question, Commissioner Franz, about the golf course also prompts a question in my mind, too, about the soccer fields. I drive by the soccer fields probably five days out of seven, and rarely see anyone there. And you talk about, in terms of a, a time-intensive, a labor-intensive park, that is, that's huge. I mean, the, the amount of manpower it takes to mow those things twice, and I think they do it at least twice a week, is, is, is pretty impressive, and I think that that might be another thing that, that we look at in terms of, as we shift employees around. I'm not saying that we, you know, we let our investment, you know, languish or go to seed, so to speak, but at the same time, I think that, you know, if we're reapportioning employees, and if we're not going to be doing our own soccer programs, then, to me, that would seem to be a natural place that you could, you know, reduce Parks workers' concentrated efforts.
Sure. Mike's Craig, prior to all of this, we were having conversations about mowing frequency and, and how, you know, properties, it may not be high-profile, and maybe out of, by the public view, and had actually reached out to a couple of properties that we shared with other entities about the possibility of turning them into, to wildflowers or something like that. So we, we'd started to look at, you know, questioning the assumption that everything needed to be mowed once a week already. With the approach to essential, non-essential, I, I would tell you, well, a couple of things. Tried to stress to staff that my true priority is the safety of our employees first, and I'm seeing other communities that are taking the, the government exemption across the board. Without question, every employee just continues to work as an essential employee. Not only did we not do that, but we tried to say, if we're going to go on split shifts, if we're going to dial back, let's figure out an alternate way to look at core services and, and what we do. So in the Parks Department, we, well, I should tell you, across the board, we're going to see how that works, and we may need to then start bringing employees back to, you know, on a partial schedule. Accounts payable is an example that Debbie and I talked about. We identified them as non-essential for the moment, but if we can figure out a timeframe where they can either work from home, or they can do it in the building, and not be exposed to a lot of coworkers and the public, then we, we'll try to fire accounts payable back up. We're taking a similar approach to Parks Maintenance and Mowing. I've tasked the department head and, and his division heads to try to put teams together so that we're not, we don't have a rotating exposure amongst coworkers, and, and we just start trying to segment up, and I've, I've authorized them, take it to basics. We, we need to be thinking about, everything doesn't have to be mowed on the same schedule. What do we absolutely have to do to, to maintain the minimum?
Commissioner Hodges, and, and thanks for, everyone for letting me wander down this, this path, I appreciate it. And to, just to add to what you were saying, you know, if we were to, if we are doing some reductions in our more labor-intensive parks, whether that's golf courses, or whether that's soccer fields, or whatever, because we can't do the programming that goes with those, and we're looking for ways to do split shifts, I mean, I think it was, it's really instructive to look at the Parks Master Plan, that where citizens placed a lot of value on passive enjoyment of nature and hiking, and maybe, at this point, you know, there's some way that, you know, staff can, staff time can be used to focus on areas that they haven't, there just haven't simply been enough of them to focus on in the past. So, I mean, within the parameters of keeping them safe, and making sure that they're not working in teams, and they're not working with a lot of exposure to the public.
Mike's Craig, good point. We haven't gone back and looked at Park Master Plan to set some of those priorities, at least I haven't. We've identified non-essential employees so deep in the Parks function that our focus is trash pickup and mowing, and that's it. And in terms of free time to, to take on new tasks, if we have that, my directive to staff is that's non-essential, and we, we shouldn't be doing that at the moment. But you, to your point, if we have to start making some choices, the Park Master Plan's certainly a, a good resource to indicate where, you know, high usage and high value is placed. But we, as I said before, we're trying to support that, that broader initiative of, you know, get outdoors and walk, and, and that's trash pickup, and that's mowing and maintenance, so the, the public access is available. We're, anything that's for fee, anything that's a league, scheduling, that type of thing, we've, we've set that aside for the moment.
Debbie Pack, any other questions on that, concerns? Okay, so the next area we wanted to cover was long-term debt obligations, because we know that, that there's some concern about our obligations to the debt that we have out there, and what the effects of the, the economy are going to have on those. So I wanted to put together just some language on, on really what our, our commitment to these are. So for general obligation bonds, which is what the majority of our bonding is, is, it is really secured by the full faith and credit of the city. That means we have to increase property tax to make those payments. Revenue bonds are payable solely from and secured by the operation of the Water and Sewer Fund. Those, that's the only fund that we have revenue bonds issued for at this time. The KDHE loans are payable by the fees also of the water and sewer operation. However, there is language in that, in that agreement that if that cannot pay, that we would be obligated to levy taxes against our property. Star bonds is a big question. These are bonds that are, are absolutely covered by, covered by the sales tax increment that's provided in that district. In the language of the Act, it, it's very specific in saying, and in the agreement that we have, that we signed with our debt holders, that the city, there's no general obligation or full faith and credit obligation of the City of Salina. So typically, what would happen is, they would just wait until that sales tax comes back, and then those sales tax, there's a 20-year period, those sales taxes, they come in, we'll pay off that debt. Is there any questions about specific debt, or? We'll cover some of this, this in detail as we go along, but those were just some definitions of those debts, that we can kind of look at those, and have a parameter for what we're going to look at next. So the next slide does cover our debt service fund. We, we have two debt service funds, one, one that covers the general obligation bonds, and then we have a debt service fund for the Water and Sewer Fund that covers their debt. Currently, the ending fund balance in the debt service fund was a little over $1 million at the end of 2019. With the implementation of the mill levy for the radio project, that probably will not incur debt this year, we will probably have a little bit of cushion in that fund, because there is some collection on that mill levy that we won't have debt directly related to. The fund balance on the debt service fund for the Water and Sewer Fund was a little over $600,000 at the end of 2019, and we have budgeted transfers from that fund to cover the debt payment for those different debt mechanisms for the Water and Sewer Fund. The next slide, any questions on that slide?
If I may, I see we have a caller on line from Spectra, and been able to trade emails, I think it is the General Manager of Tony's Pizza Event Center that was volunteering to answer questions, if you'd like to double back to that discussion. I believe you're unmuted, Susan, are you on the line?
I am, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. Now, just watching the meeting remotely here, and wanted to be available. I heard some questions earlier pertaining, and wanted to answer those questions if possible.
So it might be helpful just to explain kind of what you're seeing operationally, what you've done, and, and I don't know that your crystal ball's any better than the rest of ours, but what, what you're thinking.
I'm probably seeing a, a better glimmer of hope than maybe some other people, just because we're, we're busy over here doing lots of rescheduling. As of last Monday, we didn't schedule any part-time operations or event staff. Obviously, we knew at that time we were going to be shut down for an extended period, and started postponing and rescheduling events, so that would be our first, most initial cost-saving measure. Now, I provided Chris with the report, just kind of going through some others, but I think it's worth noting that we are in a work-from-home state currently, but we can all work remotely via our. via our technology and have been doing so. We are also doing lots around the building itself for cost savings, including HVAC reductions, light reductions, even goes, to go as far as returning any perishable food materials. For example, we were able to save over $8,000 just by returning our current stock of beer, knowing that it obviously has a shelf life, just like some other things, and we could return that to those vendors within a certain timeframe. So, we, we took advantage of that cost-saving measure. And then we'll, obviously, when we have a better idea of when we'll reopen and continue events, we'll reorder.
So, you mentioned rescheduling, and I know from some of the communications we've had, you're rescheduling the events that are having to be postponed at the moment, and it sounded like you had a pretty good rescheduling rate.
I, I do. I, you know, some of them hopefully would be as early as June this year. I think that's our goal, our measure. And, but we do have several that are moving out of the fiscal year, starting in July, August, September, which is normally our slower time of the year. Typically, our busiest time of the year is late January to probably late April. So, we're seeing that shift forward, if you will, about four to five months, and it's a good problem to have, but we're, we're struggling a little bit to find dates for all those events that want to shift. In addition to that, I think, for, for understanding as far as my business is concerned, we are getting new requests for, you know, fall, late fall, winter coming up also. So, we're processing those requests as they're coming in as well.
Thank you. I think that's helpful. I don't know if the commissioners have any other questions for you.
Great. I just wanted to call in, and like I said, if anybody had any questions, I wanted to be available.
Thank you, Susan.
So, then on slide, this Debbie Pack, on slide 15, I wanted to give you a kind of an overview of what our near-term bond payments look like. I went out to 2021. They go out, obviously, till 2040 or whatever our latest issue was. But I wanted to kind of give you this kind of overview of what those look like, what types of, what the different types of loans and payments, debt payments, we were going to have to have, as well as the bottom right-hand little box that kind of shows you what the source of revenue that we are estimating at this point would be covering those costs. Just to assure you that, as we go through the budget throughout the year, we take, we take the schedule of debt payment, and we calculate what that total's going to be, and we kind of estimate what those other revenue sources are. For example, motor vehicle tax and transient guest tax and special, we look at what special assessments are going to be levied. And we kind of back into then what we will be required to need for our property tax support. So, it's kind of our backstop. Because of these general obligation bonds, that's really the, the intent of those bonds is the full faith and credit of the city. So, as you can see, we've, we've estimated that those numbers are going to come in with the fund balances that we have in the debt service fund. The support of the transient guest tax is pretty minimal in, in the big scheme. The sales tax does support this because of the projects that we have supported by that, so that could be affected. But we'll just have to go forward and look at that. I think the other, I mentioned this earlier, was the, the .7 mills that we did include in the 2019 mill levy for the radio project will give us a little bit of cushion for that, those debt payments. Are there any questions on this particular slide? Okay. Not, we'll move on to star bond information. I know there's a big concern about the star bond and star bond projects. Mr. Shkreg might be able to address any of the particular projects. I'm not sure that we've got any additional information. But what I did want to provide you is kind of where the, what the status of those, those funds are. The first box is truly, these are the bank accounts that we hold with the trustee and where that money all sits that we got from those bonds that we issued back in December. As you can see, the majority of them are still sitting in escrow accounts. Those funds will be released under certain conditions as these projects are completed. We do still have funds in our capitalized interest, about $476,000. We do have some funding, about $300,000 in our debt service fund. And what's not reflected in these balances is the $287,000 adjustment from the stars, the star bond district sales tax collections from last year. So, if you put all those numbers together and you look at the payment that has to go out this year in June, it's $896,000. We certainly have enough money in those funds, in those funds to pay that, that debt payment. And then, as we look farther out into December, we look, we, we would need to look at where our collections are at that point. I did also include on here, because we didn't have information last year for the star bond collections in January, February, and March, because we ended, we started so late and the, the collection is delayed. As of March of this year, we had collected about 34% of the baseline. And as you might or might not remember, there was a baseline set, we have to meet that amount, and then anything over and above that amount goes to the project to pay the debt. So, once we get to that point, then that, those funds start going to the debt fund to pay the debt. So, we're about 34% on the state side and about 27% on the local tax base as of the end of March. And we'll have to continue to, to evaluate those as we look at what our collections will be on sales tax. This might be a good point. Shannon, can you bring up that up, spreadsheet? Mike had asked me to put together kind of a timeline for sales tax collection, because it's kind of confusing. We're being affected today in March and April and May of 2020. So, this all went into effect, and hopefully you can see this, I should have printed some of these for you. We kind of started seeing the, the travel requirements going to effect about mid-March. So, some of that sales tax, retail sales tax out in the public, were, were starting to get affected about then. Either going up or going down. People weren't traveling. We, the transient guest tax might, might have been affected. So, between March 16th and March 31st would have been the collection period of our sales tax for March. That, that sales tax is collected by the retailers in March. In April, they're required to submit that to the state. So, and then we don't actually see that distribution until May, which is the bottom box in May. So, we won't even have information on what the initial section of this pandemic is doing to us until May, about May 25th. And then, as we hit April, which is going to be the biggest effect on us, I believe, because we're now in a stay-at-home order, people aren't going out, there's a lot of more businesses shut down, the unemployment's going to start moving up. That's collected at the retailer level in April. They submit it to the state in May, and then June 25th is when we would see that data. And that cycle just continues. So, that's why it's very difficult for us to know exactly what's happening out there. Now, I have, I have reached out to the state to see if there's any way that we can get information earlier. I haven't gotten a response. But they have some things they have to do, too. So, it's not as simple as it comes in and they just have all the information. So, I just wanted to bring this up, because I think it's important to realize that that two-month delay in, in distribution to us does cause us to have to wait for information to, to be able to even see what that effect is on our, on our sales tax collections. Are there any questions on this kind of flow? I think we've talked about it a little bit before.
Commissioner Hodges, and the transient guest taxes are even further in arrears, because they're quarterly?
The transient guest tax are collected for the quarter, and then we receive that quarter in, in the month following that quarter. So, what we, what's happening now, the second quarter, the first quarter, we probably would have been covered. We'll see that in, in April. So, we'll kind of have a little bit of an information on that. We, we might see some drop because of the, the little section, two-week section of that quarter.
Right.
Because the quarter runs through March 31st. And then where we won't see it really is until we get our collection in July.
Right.
For the April, May, June quarter that, that we're looking at now. So, that's correct. Okay. Any other questions on that sales tax collection? Any questions on the star bond information?
Commissioner Hodges, so, we pay, we, we obviously have enough money to, you know, make our, our June payment and probably our, our December payment. I mean, even if we got, like, nothing more in the coffers. And obviously, we will. But, you know, at, at what point, if we have to spend down the debt service reserve account and our revenue, our tax revenues are just not able to cover our payments, I mean, is, if, if something like that, if it looks like it's going to happen, at what point do we start to have some of those conversations about either funding source or what we plan to do in terms of covering the payment, or whether or not we do? I mean...
Mike's Craig here. I don't know if you intended to be optimistic, and I'm going to temper that, but to say that obviously we...
Be optimistic? Please, Mike.
To say that we obviously will receive revenue, we will only receive revenue if the 2020 total exceeds the baseline. So, we will receive sales tax revenue.
Right.
But we don't know until year-end or somewhere along the way whether it'll be sufficient to create an increment that can be redirected to the star bonds. So, taking into account that, that time delay that Debbie mentioned, I think the conversation we're going to have to have is ongoing in terms of what are we seeing? What, what date do we have? What time period does it correspond to? And then what does that look like in terms of an increment projection? But as you, as you did mention, you know, there's, there's funds there for the first couple of months, and so we're probably out into 2021, I'm, I'm sorry, this first couple of payments.
Right.
So, we're probably trying to pay attention in anticipation of what might have to happen in 2021.
And we are actually, Debbie Pack, we are actually already having those conversations with our financial advisors, obviously, because we're going through a bond rating call right now, and, and these things come up. So, as, as we see things happen, we are obligated to our bondholders to report those things. So, if we see, and we also have to report to them on a, on a bi, biannual basis, where we are, where our collections are and those types of things. I will say that in reading the documents for the, these bond issuances, for especially for star bonds, it's very clear to people that invest in star bonds that there is a lot of risk, especially in the early stages of these, of these projects. So, I, they go in it open, you know, these, this is not moms and pops coming into these, these investments. So, I would say that there, there's been some clear, kind of, language that, that they get from those, those investments. And as you can see from the star bond schedule, payment schedule, we had our local group that bought subordinate bonds. They're on the bottom of the list. So, if things push out and we don't collect them, they may not get paid. So, and they knew that going into the, into this. So, you know, and they, they were willing to take that risk because they're comfortable, they're, they were that confident in the project.
Mike's Craig. And I would add that those subordinate bonds were structured that the payment could be deferred, and there's an interest rate that accrues if there's sufficient increment in years, you know, the out-years in the 2030s. So, they, it kind of mitigated, they, they knew they took a risk, they tried to mitigate that risk with interest. And so, it, for them, I think it's a function of how it performs over the entire life of the star bonds. As Ms. Pack noted, and as she reported in terms of the summary of the, the different types of bonds, star bond, economic development bonds are not full faith and credit bonds. They don't carry with it an obligation. We'll just have to see how the performance plays out.
Mayor Hoppick, and based on what star bonds are used for, we're not going to be unique. I mean, this is, this is not, we're not in a unique situation. This is going to be...
And not to be too pessimistic, but other projects found themselves in this situation without a pandemic.
Commissioner Frans, just to point of clarification on the star bonds, the taxes that can go to the district are only those that exceed the baseline. Is that baseline calculated on the district as a whole, or is that done on a business-by-business basis?
Mike's Craig. It's the district as a whole, and it's for the entire year. So, it makes it difficult at any given month to say...
Yes.
Increment, we had a good month. We generated increment. It's not until we get to the end, we total it all up.
So, what happens, in fact, if the hotel opens or the alley reopens, they might generate lots and lots of tax that is new tax from the standpoint of the individual business. But if the rest of the downtown district does not recover from this as quickly, there's still no increment and potentially for those bonds.
Correct, for that year-end.
That, that is a, that makes a, a difference in the way we look at that, I think.
No, I, you're absolutely correct. That's the point I was trying to make, is that until the entirety of the district exceeds the baseline that's established, and we really won't know that until we approach year-end, and we don't, we're not generating any increment to be captured and applied to the star bonds.
So, it makes it very difficult to project at any point during the year until, you know...
Right. We can, we can, we have all the historical data, so we can say, February this year compared to the February of the base year, it looks like this. But then we have this pandemic gap in here, and then we got to figure out whether we're recovering enough to, to make up for lost time.
And while we have the revenue study, sorry, this Debbie Pack, while we have the revenue study that says what we believe these new projects will bring into it, we still don't know that. So, like you said, it's very hard to project until we get some of this data in place, and we can have some historical data.
Mayor Hoppick, but based on that baseline, we, we know what that should be for a 12-month period. So, if we get six months into the year, and we know where we are on, on sales tax, we should know whether, you know, have a feel for where we're at, if we're, if we're lagging, if we're exceeding what we think.
Yeah, Mike's Craig, you're right. You know, that was my point, that we have enough history about the base year. And I should say, you know, we had to carve out individual businesses and the nature of their sales tax. So, it, it, it's not, we're talking in aggregate sales tax numbers, and we're going to have to dive into that a little bit. But we could at least say, our, any particular month of 2020, we could try to compare it back to, to the base year. But then you, we know we're going to have some lag, then we're going to have to try to figure out whether we're make, we're regaining in the remainder of the calendar year.
And I think, Debbie Pack, the number that I show up there, the 34% of the state collection, goes back to your comment, Mayor Hoppick, that as of March, we had collected 34% of sales tax against that increment, which, if you look at a true number, should have been 25% of that number. Now, when we stick all this into there, those numbers can certainly go a little haywire. But we will continue to track that, and we do have to report it to the, the bondholders. So, it's not something that we just put away and wait until it happens. So, any other questions on star bonds and payments? Okay. And the next fund we want to look at a little bit more closely is the sales tax capital fund. We talk about this fund a lot, because it does support a lot of what we do in our community, and it's supporting a lot of our, our projects. I wanted to update the information. The information we had in the previous slides for all the funds, that information was through March or through February 29th. This information looks a little bit different, because it is through March, so we've got another month of collections in here. And so, you can see kind of at where we are, we have some encumbrances out there, and we'll talk about those in our project discussion a little bit later. We have fairly minimal actual expense to date. We have collected about 26% of what we anticipated at this point in that sales tax capital fund from our budget numbers. Any questions about the fund and its status?
Commissioner Frans, just to clarify, is that 26% a two-month number or a three-month number?
That's a cumulative number.
Well, to what date?
To March, the March distribution.
Okay, so it's three distributions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hodges, so back to your, to your earlier comment about star bonds, this is something that 25% would be right on track. So, 26%, we are, we've gained a percentage point there.
And we've seen that in our, in our sales tax reporting, that we believe our sales tax is up just a little bit in this first quarter of the, of the year. So, then I, I created this spreadsheet. As you know, we've seen the spreadsheet that expands 40 pages long, and it's very overwhelming. So, I tried to condense this a little bit easier to read. I don't know. Hopefully, I achieved that goal. And I broke that down into the next five years for the commitments that we kind of have in that sales tax capital fund. Obviously, we have economic development. That's the 3.9% that we put into that economic development fund to pay for things like SCDO and other economic development projects. The existing debt is, those are, those are projects that we've already approved to be paid out of sales tax. So, those are the payments over the next five years for that existing debt. The Lee Building is a commitment that we made last year to support the remodel or revitalization of the Lee Building. Kenwood Cove Maintenance, we have budgeted in there to put that aside for maintenance of our water park. to put that aside for maintenance of our water park. Vehicles and Equipment, we have a specific amount budgeted every year for the purchase of vehicles and equipment in our fleet. Street improvements, CIP planning, purchase, our buildings and facilities, park maintenance, hike bike trails, and the stabili, tax stabilization for the general fund. Are there any questions about those categories? Or kind of, is there an understanding of what those are and how their, their commitments to the, out of that fund are?
Commissioner Hodges, so with the exception of economic development and the Lee Building, basically, all of these are internal commitments to the organization.
That's correct.
And I'm sure that they're, I mean, the, for this Alina Community Economic Development Organization, I mean, they've got to be aware of the ramifications of any, you know, sales tax hit in terms of our ability to continue funding them. Because, I mean, that's one thing that, you know, I'm seeing that a lot of these either remain the same or maybe decrease across the board. But that's one that I, you know, probably because it's a percentage.
Yes.
It continues to, to, to grow that. So I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm sure they're aware of it, but that, you know, we've communicated that this is going to be, obviously, it's going to be a point of discussion as we look at the 2021 budget. We made the commitment for this year, but depending on what those come back at.
Mike's Craig, I haven't had any recent communications to that effect. The one clarification, I understand your point, to say that the remainder are internal commitments, that depends on how you want to characterize debt. At the point that we've incurred debt, we have a, we don't have as much discretion.
Absolutely. But just in terms of, I mean, we, Commissioner Hodges, we would have the ability to say, okay, we're not going to spend $500,000 on parks maintenance this year. This is a $200,000 year. Or this is a, a year that we don't spend any on the CIP planning or whatever it is that we have to make the internal adjustments. And obviously, it affects staff, it affects departments, but.
Right. Mike's Craig, completely agree. In fact, you're going to see in a few more slides exactly how deep we dove into that. I just, the, the debt, we've made a commitment outside our organization.
Yes, yes. Yes, I understand. Thank you.
Debbie Pack. And the bottom line is, for that debt, if, if you so chose not to support it through sales tax, we would be obligated to issue property tax to cover that because they're all general obligation bonds.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have excluded that in, in my things that are, yeah, that we don't control. Right.
Any other questions about those commitments that we have put ourselves into under that sales tax obligation? Okay. So the next slide kind of talks about, we do have some areas of, of funding, I guess this is the bright side of the slide, that we, that we have available that we are required to spend in 2020 based on their functionality. So we just wanted to touch base with these again so that we can keep them in our mind as we go through these conversations, as we get through the projects and things like that. The first one is, is the KDOT Trail, which we've had a lot of conversation about. Just a reminder that in order to utilize that grant, we would have to put through city funding grant match funds of about $435,000. That's where, that's the difference between the total that Public Works has figured out the project would cost and the grant funding. We have an option to politely decline that. Staff would tell you that the sooner you do that, the better because obviously the, the state wants to be able to utilize that money in another place. They want other people to be able to use that money.
Mayor Hoppick, did that include the Ohio Street expense for the light?
Yes. This trail grant project that we're referring to is that YMCA Trail and the, the crossing on Ohio Street.
So is that something we address today? Or is that a separate item we address in a, in a meeting in the future?
Well, it's a really good, Mike's Craig, that's a really good question. What Debbie and I talked about was, you know, we pulled all this together. We, what we've not pulled together is, you know, an action item for you to, you know, unilaterally give us direction. Given the timing of this, this might be something that you want to go ahead and give us direction today. And then my intention is to essentially get your, your consensus to the best of my ability on pretty much everything else and bring that back to you next Monday as a, as an action item that hopefully is a summary of the direction that you provided. So with respect to this item, in light of the timing, it probably would be good to give us direction today.
I would, I would like to open that up to the commission then for comments.
Commissioner Franz, a couple of comments about this project tangential to, I spent the last couple of days trying to figure out what is happening with the economic impacts of this little fat-encrusted piece of protein that we can't even see that's causing us all this difficulty. And I am of the opinion that we're not talking about a two-month deal or a four-month deal. We're talking about 12 months, 18 months of near lockdown in order to get it under control. Because if we don't do that, we're going to see repeated resurgences. And we will be going through this two-step, three or four times. Relax, tighten, relax, tighten. That's, that's virtually everything I've, I've read about the way we can expect this to play out. And given that as, as the background to this, I'm all about protecting sales tax money wherever we can because it is general purpose money that we have some control over how we apply it. So I am inclined to say no to just about everything that is sales tax related and try to relieve it wherever we can. And in this particular case, I think it would be prudent for us to not spend the sales tax money on this project at this time. The, you know, the River Project is at this point delayed a year, two or three years, whatever it works out to be. And to redirect the federal exchange monies to another element of the street project, perhaps a manhole adjustment project, which is now coming out of sales tax, maybe something else that's coming out of sales tax. So we can preserve those balances and hold them as additional rainy day because we will need them. There's no question about that. So I think that anytime we can reduce expenses in the sales tax fund at this point, we need to jump on that opportunity. All that being said, I am disturbed enough about the crossing on Ohio Street that I'm probably not going to support this project anyway. So two strikes as far as I'm concerned.
Mike's Craig, if I may, to jump ahead a little bit, I think you're going to see that what, what we've totaled up in the way of numbers is trying to identify every discretionary sales tax expenditure and at least give you that total for your consideration. So I think the conversation's going to take us there. And one other piece of information I think you, we will be getting to and you ought to know at this point, not because I think we should do this project, but we've had a, I guess you would, I can't remember if we've reported the, the federal funds exchange windfall that we realized, but they, they realized this year because of some of their accounting or math discrepancies that they're sending us an additional $400,000 approximately.
About $400,000, yes.
So that's, that's what accounts to the, for the 897 number you're seeing there. I'm not saying that that changes the discussion about the, this particular project and this grant, but that's why the 897 number is there. And then we do feel a sense of obligation to find eligible uses of that money, but it certainly could be other projects. And Jim Co-watch is on the line. He's Public Works Director, Jim Co-watch is on the line. He's very knowledgeable. He and I have had a conversation, very knowledgeable about the federal funds exchange and kind of what our priority projects are. We, we are currently doing crack sealing. That's already underway. So that's about $200,000. One of the things that we've been talking about is Mulberry Street, the storm drainage and, and the street improvements there by the hotel. And, and we talked, Jim and I talked about it this morning. It, from a storm drainage standpoint, it stands about six inches in water in a storm event. So that, I think, was some priority for, a priority project for him. Santa Fe is something, the, the remainder of Santa Fe is something that we put off and it's starting to, to show failures. We also talked about the raising the manholes. And then I, the question I had was just, can we more granularly apply it to our operations, whether it's pothole patching, that type of thing? And, and he wasn't so sure. He felt like we, we could spend it on materials, but it had to be a project. For example, gravel or material to construct a road or rebuild a road, but he wasn't confident that pothole patching in particular was, was an eligible expense. So Jim, if you're listening and want to join the conversation, press star nine and I should be able to see that. Go ahead and with your conversation.
Other comments.
He just hit it. I'm sorry. Here he is. Jim, you're unmuted.
Hello? Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yes, I, I don't, didn't know if you had a chance to see it, Mike, but I sent Debbie, you and Debbie, a couple of screenshots of the KDOT guidelines. And Dan and I talked about it. And we did confirm it does need to be project related versus your routine maintenance.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. I see, I see you've got some priority items. Recognizing the 897 number, are you willing to offer up kind of a priority list of projects that would spend to that number?
Yeah, I think it's consistent with Debbie's next couple of slides.
Okay.
We talked about completing Santa Fe. We talked about completing the storm, storm sewers along Mulberry. We talked about going ahead and completing the crack ceiling that's underway because it is the baseline maintenance that we would need to do any of the other overlaying work. We know that the manhole repairs have been a high priority. So that's also listed.
Commissioner Franz, if I might make a suggestion, why don't we defer the idea of where we want to apply that $897,000 and simply talk about whether or not we want to proceed with the trail project? Because until we make that decision, the 897 is not there to talk about.
Commissioner Hodges, I just want to say that I agree with your analysis. And I think that at this point, it would be best to politely decline the KDOT Trail Grant match.
Commissioner Davis?
Sounds like a wise use of the money.
Commissioner Ryan?
I agree.
Yeah.
Lack of use of the money.
Lack of use, yeah. And I agree that we should probably at this point should decline it. And I, I agree 100% with Commissioner Franz as far as the, the street crossing was a, was going to be a real roadblock for me approving that anyway. So, so do we need to have that put on an agenda item for next week then?
Actually, I was going to ask you to make a motion to that effect, just so that we had sufficient authority to communicate back to KDOT.
And Mayor, or Commissioner Franz, would you like to make?
Commissioner Franz, here, Mayor Hoppick, I would, I would move that we politely decline the KDOT Trail Grant, given our current circumstances with regard to the COVID pandemic and the necessity of preserving our sales tax funds for purposes that will become apparent.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion and a second to politely decline the KDOT Trail Grant funds of $167,514. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That is a five zero. Do we need to, I guess, the, the federal funds exchange dollars, do we need to do, address that today? Or do we, can we address that?
Mike's Craig, I think staff can bring that back to you as kind of a standalone action item, recognizing that that's a dedicated source of funds and with restricted uses. And we can bring you back some decision options in terms of how to use those funds.
Okay, perfect. Is the, is the commission okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Debbie will move on. Thank you.
Okay. So the next section of slides, we're, we wanted to look at some specific projects to get your direction on kind of where to move with those. And I've tried to separate them in order by kind of legal obligation. And that's why we have our contracts, legal people here. Just beginning with those projects that we have underway, they're under construction, they're considerably under construction, and, and kind of how we move forward with the, some of those projects.
So if I can jump in, Mike's Craig, again. At the outset of the meeting, I noted the possibility of the need for executive session and then explained how we might go about that. So as we talk about contractual provisions and what our options may be and what the implications may be, that is, that's the basis of the executive session language that I believe you have been provided a copy of. So we, we can certainly talk about the projects and the status of them in terms of percentage complete and dollars spent, that type of thing. If, if you, understandably, if you have more detailed questions about what our options may be and what the implications may be, then I think that is certainly executive session material.
Okay. I'm bringing it to the commission. Does anyone want to discuss just in general? Or would you prefer to go into executive session at this time to discuss?
Commissioner Davis, a general discussion because we may be able to whittle the list. We might need that information down to just one or two.
Do you have some questions for staff?
If I may, Mike's Craig, I think Debbie can walk you through the project. And I think it's probably of general public interest, each project by project, but how much was the budget? How far out of the way through it are we? How much is left to be spent? That's probably, you know, certainly public information. And when we start to talk about possible courses of action, that's probably the executive session conversation is appropriate. So I think Debbie can walk you through just kind of project updates and then we can go from there.
Do you want to just start with this section of projects?
Sure.
Okay. So this section of projects, as I mentioned, is the projects that are well underway and that we've already either issued some sort of financing for or, yeah, most of them we've issued some financing for. So the first one is the Training Center facility. It's about a $5.6 million contract. The, the completion is about 65%. And we have about, a remaining balance of about $2.8 million. We do have temporary notes issued for those and intend to issue some additional temporary notes with the issuance that we're going out for in, in April. The golf course irrigation.
I'm sorry, Mike's Craig again. Debbie, can you speak to, in general, to say that we have paid out a certain amount, as the project continues to progress, there'll be costs incurred that we just yet to be invoiced for?
Yes.
And so the police training facility is a good example of that of, and we, we have an invoice that we're anticipating. And then we also have materials ordered or the contractor has materials ordered. And I, I think Chief Nelson reached out to the contractor and was able to provide Ms. Pack with a little bit more detail that might be worth sharing.
Yes. On that particular project, I will say that cost that I reported is through February. And they've obviously worked all of March. And the costs per month are about $700,000. That project is anticipated to be complete this year. So they have purchased materials and, and objects that need to go within the building. I didn't, I don't know if I have specific numbers on that, but they, they do have costs already incurred on that.
Mayor Hoppick, so you said basically they're spending $700,000 a month. So we showed that they'd paid, you'd paid out seven, 2.7. So we can add another $700,000 to that.
About three and a half million.
Plus, there would be material that we would be obligated for that's been ordered.
That's true.
Okay.
Commissioner Hodges, so all of these are actually like bare minimum. In, in point of fact, we've probably incurred costs above, for example, with the police training center, our actual costs that have been incurred may be up to like 75% or 80% or 85%.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
The golf course irrigation project is very near completion, about 95%. They do have a little bit more work to do on that. Anticipated remaining cost is about $95,000. We have issued bonds on part of that project and we intend to issue the bonds on the, the remainder of that project in, in this issuance. The water plant is about a $31 million project. It's about 38% complete. We've spent about $12 million through January. Their costs are about $1.4 million. I was speaking to Ms. Tasker this morning. She felt on their timeline that they would be complete with that project sometime in the fourth quarter of this year. We do have a KDHA loan out on that project also. The river renewal design, we have very little left in this portion of that. The preliminary design, about $130,000. That's about 90% complete, 96% complete. We have issued bonds on part of that. We have, we would anticipate issuing the remainder of those bonds in our April. We have issued bonds on part of that and we have, we would anticipate issuing the remainder of those bonds in our April issuance. The streetscape is about a $12 million project, we do have a little bit to finish up downtown. The anticipation of the remainder of that is a little over a million dollars and we have issued bonds for that in an amount of about $10.5 million. And the remaining cost of that is going to come from our reimbursement of the star bonds, which is about $2 million.
Ms. Pack, Commissioner Franz, I notice on the streetscape, it says the total amount of the projects, about 11.9 million. We've paid out 11.3 and we're anticipating spending another million, so we're going to run over on that project by?
No, we're not, the cost that, there's a little bit of different approach, the project amount, the contract amount is truly what we issued the, the contract for with contractor. The cost to date could include financing costs, additional other costs that might have been paid out.
Design costs that weren't part of the contract.
Correct.
Et cetera, all right, thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that, because I meant to mention that.
Ms. Pack, Mayor Hoppick, you said on the water plant that that is, the 11.6 million is through the end of January?
Yes, that was the last invoice that I had in the system.
And then you said that monthly you were anticipating, did you say 1.2 million?
1.4 is what I saw, the last, the last bill was 1.4 million. I believe Ms. Tasker probably has some additional information, I don't know if she's on the line, but.
If it's 1.4 a month and that is 14.4. There's a couple of City of Salina lines that don't call out the caller, so if Martha's on the line, she needs to press star nine if she wishes to speak. I don't, I don't see anything.
Any questions, further questions on that page for staff?
Commissioner Hodges, Mayor Hoppick and staff, do we want, if a commissioner has a question or wants to pursue further a particular project, would you like us to bring it up now or wait until we go through the through the rest of the options?
I think I would, and help me, Mr. Scragg, but I think what would probably be best is to go through the next two pages perhaps. And then, I believe the, and I'll look to Mr. Martin for this one, but I believe that our motion is such that we can go into executive session and discuss multiple contracts, would that be correct?
That is correct, yes.
Five minute break before then.
Okay, okay, so.
So we'll get through the next.
I think we have quite a couple more pages to discuss as far as.
Correct.
So, why don't we go ahead and go through those and then I think we can take a break and go into executive session and discuss multiple contract options if we need to.
Sure. Debbie Pack, the next page, slide 21, is, these are projects that we have awarded those contracts. They've been signed by all parties and we've actually issued notices to proceed to the contractors. Those one include the pavement ceiling project, which is about $260,000. We've paid out about $70,000 of that. We've actually encumbered that into the gas tax fund already, so in the, in the information that you saw earlier in the funding information, where we saw some encumbrance, that was already included in that number. The Mulberry Storm Sewer Project is about $460,000, we have not paid out any money, but the materials have been purchased on that by the contractor and we have encumbered that project also. Dean Evans Drainage, about $56,000, we have minimal advertising that we've actually paid out. We do have materials that have been purchased on that project. And then the Water Main Project that's in this section is actually the new project. This would be the last KDHA loan that we got approval for and that has not spent any money on that project yet either.
Commissioner Hodges, so bearing in mind the proposal for using the exchange funds for the Mulberry Storm Sewer, would that then go from being the gas tax encumbered to?
Yes.
Exchange, okay, yes.
Commissioner Franz, I would note the Dean Evans Project is coming out of sales tax.
That's correct.
Do we have an assessment on the likelihood of a season this year? I would be surprised to be blunt.
Well, I guess it, the variables that factor into my mind are number one, the order, whether it's the governor's order or the local order. First thing that has to happen is mass gatherings have to be permissible. Then secondly, it becomes a function of what we make, decisions we make financially in terms of staffing, part-time staff to prepare fields and pick up trash and be scorekeepers and those type of things.
I guess my point is, is this a project that we could defer?
Well, that's probably something we need to talk about in executive session.
Well, and before, Commissioner Davis, this might actually be the best time to do it because you're not going to interrupt anybody's season this year. And when the season comes next year, if you want to get it started early, the last thing you want is drainage interrupting the season again. So this might be the perfect time to do that.
Yeah, and part of it, and I think we'll, we want to talk about in greater detail, is just where we're at after notice to proceed and how far the contractors already proceeded in terms of purchasing materials.
I do not think they had, based on the information at the table.
No, I believe.
Now, this is the section that they have been issued a notice to proceed.
Ah. Okay, that may change my opinion on that.
Correct.
To some extent.
And I will also mention, as we go through these, the green highlighted ones are those that, that department has kind of put on a higher priority for themselves because of reasons as Commissioner Davis said. Either the timing or the necessity or how they preclude other projects or something like that. So, as these, we look down these and we look, the green highlighted ones are those that the, that the departments themselves have kind of indicated to me that they're a little bit higher priority for one reason or another and they could certainly answer those questions. The next section, I dropped off a new page for 22, page 22 and 23 on your diocese before the meeting. And the reason for that was that I moved one contract for the minor concrete up into this section because we had, that contract was actually returned signed in the, between the time that we issued this, this information. So this section is awarded contracts that have been signed and in most cases there is no notice to proceed that has been actually mailed out. This is the Santa Fe Crawford to Mulberry project, this one's a little different because we actually have encumbered funds from 2019 that will cover part of this project. The additional funding for 2020 would be about $90,000 out of sales tax. But obviously if we chose not to proceed with this project, that funding would go back into the sales tax fund if we, if we went that direction. The chip seal is our normal annual chip sealing agreement, Mill and Inlay and U-Bass are the same, they're, they're our annual projects that we go through. None of these have we spent money on. The last one is the minor concrete manhole adjustment, which we, we haven't even spent money on, on that one either. The last two are the automated sanitation project purchases. We proceeded with those a few weeks ago, these contracts have been signed and are in progress. And those are some discussions that we'll probably have to have as far as the contract, where the contract is and our legal liability on those. And there's, that's the refuse carts also.
Commissioner Franz, I presume that if we want to talk about the automated sanitation system, because we've signed a contract, that would be executive session? Okay, put that on the list.
Yep. The next page, 23, are, these are awarded contracts, but they've not been signed either by ourselves or by the contractor, micro-surfacing, the breathing compressor, we have ordered that equipment, that was approved as part of the fire department purchase for capital, capital purchases for their SCBA's, this is the compressor that goes along with that. And then the last one is the basketball floors at T-PAC. We have not issued that, any money, we have not paid any money and my understanding of that agreement is that they will not start producing and going, moving forward that until we put a deposit down. And they have agreed to keep our pricing on that, on that purchase. And they would sell that particular floor to somebody else and then, but they're, they're committed that they would withhold the price, keep the price the same and give us a floor that is consistent with what we had purchased before. Page 24, these are projects that we, we've either bid and we have not come to you for approval or that we have budgeted but we have not bid. And that includes the generator for the fire station number three, the Quint purchase, that bids come in, but we have not presented it to you for approval. Another minor concrete, separate from the, the other one that we talked about earlier. Project to chip seal the landfill road, the wastewater plant design. And then several other of these others that we haven't even put, put bids out, but we're on the CIP or sub-CIP approval for 2020. I did highlight on here the Jerry Ivy Pond, staff is recommending some direction on that, we had a study session about it a month or so ago, about our concerns about whether the stability of that pond is, is going to be stable enough to go through with that project and, and whether we want to make a decision at this point just to pay the fine and not move forward with that project? Or if we want to go ahead and proceed in some way with that project?
Commissioner Hodges, could you refresh my memory, was the fine 67,000 or 60,000?
Yes.
My recollection, but. And Mike Scragg, if I could add clarification on the price property flood damaged access road repair. Apparently at the time that we did the bypass channel for the Smoky Hill River, we bypassed an oxbow north off of Simpson Road. And if you're familiar with an oxbow, it is a bend where you're just able to kind of straighten it out and make a connection. So as part of that agreement, that then impacted access to a farm field. And so as part of the agreement to do that channel, we are responsible for maintaining the access road and it has recently washed out, the culvert is recently washed out and it's problematic to access about 188 acre field, farm field. So the property owner's been very agreeable, we've been able to work with him kind of on a temporary basis, but we don't want to impact their ability to grow crops on that field. And, and the project is designed and ready to go and estimated cost is shown there at 30,000. So, and that's one you probably had not heard about before and it's a little unique, but it does feel like an obligation that we need to honor.
Mayor Hoppick, is that a one-time fix then?
Hopefully, it washed out, but I think, I think the original, you know, it's been decades that the original culvert's been in there. So yes, we, hopefully it's a one-time fix unless we have flooding and other damage.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hodges, the ones that are not highlighted, I mean, those are, staff does not have a recommendation on those?
I know, we'll get to that too. But yes.
Commissioner Ryan, would you remind me what Greenway Trail is?
That's the YMCA trail we were just talking about earlier. And then as part of this, we, we wanted to bring up the specialist assessment projects. The projects that I've highlighted in green are those projects that we've had a petition or development agreement with and some of them that we even have some financing out for. Pheasant Ridge and Stone Lake Two, we have temp notes issued or will be, being issued. The bottom four that are not highlighted are pending, so they're in either plating status or, or working on development agreements or something like that. So we just wanted to make sure that this was all out on the table so that you can kind of give us some direction on how to move forward with some of these items.
And Mike Scragg here, I know there was questions about the status of the projects that were subject to the development agreement. And the items in green, the Pheasant Ridge subdivision is approximately 98% complete, so expenses incurred and special assessment financing would be necessary. Magnolia Hills Phase Two, it, the developers contracting and getting reimbursed for that project. But it, construction's under contract and sanitary sewer work has started and is approximately 10% complete. Nine South is the commercial strip mall, what used to be the Pumpkin Patch, north of Party City or Sam's Club. And it's under construction, we estimate to be about 20% complete. Stone Lake Phase Three, there's two different developers of two different phases in Stone Lake, but Stone Lake Phase Three is the group of Kelly Dunn and Craig Piercy and Todd Roberg. They, there is a development agreement, pre-construction meeting I believe has either occurred or is going to occur tomorrow. Manholes and inlets have been approved for order and so they're, they're well on their way to proceeding with that project. And then Stone Lake Phase Two is being developed by the Doug Bradley Trust and notice to, the contract is signed and notice to proceed is forthcoming. So, I have not had an opportunity to reach out to any of those developers to find out, you know, what their intentions are in light of these recent developments, but I think all of them, or at least all but one of them, are, are past the starting point and are, are under contract and are proceeding.
And all of those, Commissioner Ryan, all of those come at a low cost and low risk to the city?
Correct, and ultimately the assessments are due and payable by the developer until they plant lots and sell lots and then ultimately the homeowners in the subdivision.
Any questions for staff? Not, then I believe there's probably a, oh, shall we see if there's any phone calls?
Good point.
Comments from the public before we?
I guess I would, if I could speak to anyone that's listening and trying to call in, I've called in on multiple phones as the meeting's gone on and I've been successful, I've had some messages that people are not, have not been successful, but it's kind of a three-step process. You need to dial the phone number.
Could you give that, could you give that phone number?
Sure, 785-621-0800. You then need to enter the participant ID, 782-956. And then you'll be prompted to announce yourself and follow that with a, with a number sign or a hash sign. It's not until you announce yourself and do the hash sign that you end up entered into the call that I'm moderating. I've got it set that you're not, your announcement's not going to interrupt the conversation and come over the speakerphone. But you have to go all the way through to that last step before you get added to this phone call. So I'm going to repeat it one more time, the number to call is 785-621-0800. The participant ID is 782-956. And then you'll be prompted to announce yourself, followed by the hash sign or number sign. At that point, you will be included into the call. And with that, it looks like we have one caller now that, from City of Salina that wishes to speak. I'm unmuted and the number ending in 5725, go ahead.
Hey, Mike, commissioners, this is Martha, I, I think I didn't hit my star button hard enough, I tried to get on earlier. So, if you still have a question on the south water treatment plant, I'd try to answer that.
I think the question that came up, this is Mayor Hoppick, that, I got to go back to that page, that we had through January had spent approximately 11.6 million and then Ms. Pack made the comment, she thought we were spending about 1.4 million per month. Does that sound about right?
Yes, and we do have a couple more pay applications from that one in January. And it's anywhere from 1 million to 1.7 million, so 1.4 is a, a nice round number.
Commissioner Hodges here, Ms. Tasker, so would it be fair to, to say that a ballpark figure of what we've paid out, including the invoices that, that haven't been submitted, would be around 14.5 million?
Let me get to another.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, we have the advantage of looking at a, a slide here, a spreadsheet.
The one that applies to the construction project is for roughly 29.4 million and that has paid out about 11.2. Then we have some additional owners rep fees and the original first range of design from Burns and Mack. And I think we get slightly over 14 million, a little over 14, 14.5 million. I don't have the first contract in front of me and the number, but in general, that's about where we're at, so you're pretty close, Commissioner Hodges.
Thank you very much.
Again, I'm getting ready to mute you, Martha. I'm getting ready to mute you, Martha, but I wanted to give you a fair warning, anything else you wanted to add?
No, just, sorry, I, I didn't work efficiently the first round.
No problem. No problem. Okay, we now have Jim Coawatch, Public Works Director, that'd like to speak. Jim, you're unmuted.
Oh, yes, just before you went into executive session, I did want to correct one thing that's on.
Can you speak up a little, Jim?
Correct one thing that's on Slide 24. The chip seal at the landfill was not going to be sales tax. It was going to come out of the solid waste reserve fund, and that was a whole, another discussion.
Good point. I'm going to repeat that just in case the listeners at home couldn't hear it. We had categorized the chip sealing of the landfill road as coming out of sales tax when it was actually intended to come out of the solid waste fund balance.
That's good to know.
Anything else to add, Jim?
Nope, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Debbie Pack again. I do know that Chief Nelson's in the hall if there's any questions about the status of the firing, or the police training facility.
Yeah, and he's also dialed in.
Okay.
Chief Nelson, if you're listening and want to speak, press star nine. I've never known him not to want to speak. Here we go. There he is.
I won't do that.
Chief Nelson, you're unmuted.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to follow this link. This is Brian Nelson, Chief of Police. I wanted to update info on Slide 20. Are you hearing me?
Yeah, if you could speak up a little louder.
Yes. I wanted to update Slide 20 reference to the paid out date, where it says 2.8 million dollars is paid today. Actually, as of Friday, the only amount we owe is, not the only amount, the amount we owe is 1.8 million, as opposed to the Slide 20, 2.8 million.
Okay, so there's, we're down to 1.8 million left to be paid. And then you and I, you explained to me that you had a conversation with the contractor about materials that are ordered and en route.
That is, that is correct. As of Friday, basically, almost everything we have to design and build this facility has already been ordered on site or on the way, is what is explained to me, and that was mentioned in that letter that I provided.
So at that point, we're down to remaining labor to finish the project.
That is correct.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I need. Other than if you want to provide a copy of the letter, if they do, in fact, go into executive session.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody else on the phone there, Mike?
No, you might add, announce, if anyone else wants to speak, they need to press star nine as it relates to these projects. I don't see anyone. In anticipation of executive session, I want to clarify the intended approach. I might even ask for a 10-minute recess just so if we have any technology to deal with, we can. But the intention would be that we would leave the conference call live, but we would mute it to the point that everyone was muted. We would, the Salina Media Connection would post on screen that we're in executive session and would not transmit the audio, and we would need staff to come in and pause the YouTube Live, and when there's a message, they can put on the screen and redirect the video. So they can pause, they can mute the audio, they can post a message on the screen that we're in executive session, and they can change the video. At that point, we'll then have staff verify that all of that is working, we're not going to have any unintentional video or audio being broadcast, and then we would be ready to continue executive session in this room. Typically, we would leave the room, but because of social distancing, we have a couple of good-sized rooms, but we didn't feel like we could observe social distancing in them with a group dislodge.
Mayor Hoppick here. Couple items. One, would we be coming back with the intent of having some action on some of these items?
We definitely would be coming back into open session.
Will we be just giving staff direction?
Correct. I think we definitely will be coming back into open session, and then my sense is if we could get some general direction from you, then we can pull together a resolution or some form of budget amendment for action on Monday, next Monday.
Commissioner Franz, as a point of procedure, just so we get clear of this, would it be better to go through the rest of this before we do executive session, or do we want to break now and do it? I'm just saying, there's two more slides. Okay, Commissioner Davis wants to break now.
But to your point, we could recess and then come finish the presentation.
No, that's fine. I just thought there were two slides left relating to capital issues, and I thought it might be good to push those out of the way, even though they're.
Debbie Pack, we don't have any contracts on the next two slides. They're only in bid form, so I think that discussion's going to be a little bit different than.
And I think it will take a bit. There's a lot of detail on those remaining slides.
Okay, thank you.
I would ask staff and Mr. Martin, who's here with us from Clarkmeys in Linville, approximately how long do we need for executive session?
That is, I've been thinking about that for a while. That is a really good question. And in part, it depends on your interest as a governing body about the number of projects and the level of detail. I'm thinking in a minimum 30 minutes, and it, we could be at it for an hour.
Yeah, why don't we start?
Commissioner Hodges here. I was just wondering, and I'd written a note down to ask Mr. Martin, do we need to identify specific projects that we want to discuss under item 5.2? Because I think that that could dictate our level. I mean, if there's only an appetite to talk about one item, then it's a lot different than if there's six.
Well, I do think, and Erin and I haven't had a chance to coordinate a whole lot, but I do think it'd be worthwhile for him, we've categorized the status of these types of projects, I think it'd be useful for him to speak to you about the legal implications of each category of project, so that'll take a little bit. And then I'd like to give you the opportunity, in light of what he says, to be able to ask questions about any particular project, because I think what he reports to you may generate questions on your part that you may not anticipate ahead of time.
Sure. Commissioner Hodges, Aaron Martin, legal counsel. We have set up the executive session to give full attitude to discuss any of the contracts on the presentation that Ms. Pack just went over. It's not necessary from a coma executive session motion perspective to list out projects the way we've set it up, but to the extent you all wish to get a better sense going into the executive session in relation to how much time you think you'll need, that would be appropriate, but not necessary.
Commissioner Ryan here. My feeling was to break it out by the pages, the state of the contracts. And I think we could dig into the, some of them will be easier than others. I don't think we'll have to itemize every page, but I like that approach.
Yeah, I think it'd be good if we did a 10-minute break followed by a 30-minute executive session. I think that'll give us, and if we need to, depending on how much detail we get, I bet we use every bit of 30 minutes, and if not, would be surprised if we didn't come back for an extension, but to extend it, so.
What, if we do come back to extend it.
To make sure everything's there.
The audio would have to be turned back on.
Yes.
And I'm thinking, just knowing this group, with what I've just heard, it may be easier just to go 40 minutes.
Commissioner Franz, I would concur. I think that if we try to break it off too early, come back, have to fire the technology up.
That's true.
Shut it back down, fire it up again.
Go into another executive session, cut the technology. I would just as soon not take the risk of doing that twice.
Okay, that's probably good.
Given our track record.
Track record with technology, yeah.
So be a 10-minute break and a 40-minute.
40-minute executive session.
All right. Okay. Mayor Hoppick, I move the city commission recess into executive session for 40, that's four zero minutes, to discuss the subject of the city's legal rights and obligations in the event the city elects to terminate or temporarily suspend outstanding contract awards and contracts as identified in the staff report for Agenda Item 5.2, with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. This will start 10 minutes after a break, which would have us resuming in this room.
We could start at 5:20, and we could reconvene at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
Mayor Hoppick, if I may.
Yes.
Briefly, I spoke with Mr. Bankston on a quick break, and we do believe, as I mentioned earlier, in response to Commissioner Hodges' question, we, the motion that was just read and seconded does position the governing body to discuss the full slate of contracts as outlined on Ms. Pack's presentation. If the desire is to discuss something less than that full universe, then we recommend that the lesser list be recited in the motion. I understood that you did wish to discuss the full slate going into the executive session.
Mine would be everything's on the table, and so I believe that would be appropriate.
Thank you for allowing me to make that clarification.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move into executive session till 6:00 PM. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mike Scragg, if I may recap one more time, we will come back into open session. We don't anticipate action on anything, anything that we discuss in the executive session, and I'm going to take the next 10 minutes shutting off the conference, pausing the conference call. The call will still be live, it'll be muted. We'll coordinate with Salina Media Connection to broadcast executive session and no video or audio, and do the same for YouTube Live. All of them will remain active. When we reconvene in open session, we'll fire them all back up.